We are Black Box Radio and tonight in the Community Corner, we in here, we've got City Councilwoman, Ms. Felicia Porter. We're so happy to have her, but first we're gonna do some introductions. Let me get some BBR news in. This is the Community Corner, this is our third segment, this is amazing. And so I'm gonna put some, do some news right now, we got some merch coming out. So I want you guys to cop that, you know, I just put the prototype on social media, merchandise has come in. And we also are doing events, we wanna do events with the community, different events, so hit us up on blackboxradio@gmail.com. Check our website, check out, under events, our calendar, we're gonna do a lot of events this summer as COVID aligns with us. So that, that is one of the caveats, but we're planning events. Alright, and the Community Corner will be doing Cookouts. We coming to your corner this summer, so again, hit us up, Twan, you know we about to light that grill up? We about to come to-
Party for the hood!
We coming to the hood, the corner is coming.
I'll get your mind-
Yeah, get your mind right, we coming out. And so last thing, last news of the day is, contact us at blackboxradio@gmail, and please check out our new website, blackboxradio.com. Check it out, it's B-L-A-K, B-O-X-X-R-A-D-I-O. Alright, it's time for the Community Corner. I'm Queen from Black Box Radio, I am a social entrepreneur in Baltimore, and I have a co-host, and he's gonna introduce himself. Hello Black Twan.
I'm Antoine Quallsell, founder of Hope Baltimore, helping oppressed people excel with sustained support for formerly impacted people returning to communities to find bridges and pathways to resources for safe transition and inspiring hope in their community.
Love it.
I remember when you first started out, Twan.
Look at him, he got a spiel now sis, he coming with a spiel now. I love it. And today we have a special guest, we have Sister Porter. We are so happy to have you, District 10 Sitting City Councilwoman, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Introduce yourself, tell us who you are, who is Felicia Porter? And what are you doing right now in District 10? Talk to us.
So, thank you so much for having me tonight, as, as Queen Antoine had said, I am Felicia Porter, I am the newly elected councilwoman for District 10 for the Baltimore City Council. I represent South Baltimore, so that's everywhere from Berry Circle all the way down to your Violetville Mall Park, Cherry Hill, Westport Lakeland, all the way down to your Brooklyn and Curtis Bay. And so I am a public health practitioner by training, I've been a public health practitioner for over 10 years now, so that's why we talking about sugar, Twan. So I have been, I've been at the, I've been working on Capitol Hill in DC and various agencies of the White House such as the National Institutes of Health and the Food and Drug Administration. And now I'm back in Baltimore, I'm serving my community. One of the things that I actually ran on and I've been, you know, pushing for some time was building healthy communities. And so I really believe that we in Baltimore can create the environments that we want to live in. So everywhere, anything from public safety, anywhere from food sovereignty to food access, anywhere from local, local economic growth for businesses that are in, in your district proper. So I have, let's see, who is Felicia Porter? I would say I am a goofy, goofy individual, people that know me know that I love to laugh, I love to prank. So I am one of the goofy, the goofy council members, I'm the youngest on the council. You know, and so that, that comes with a, a much, much needed guidance from some of the senior members of the council. They have helped me establish who I am as a council member, but also learning the ins and outs of Baltimore City Government. Born and raised in Baltimore, grew up over west side, Edmonton Village, until I was 13 then my parents moved to Catonsville. Went to school over east side, so I caught the 15th to the 23rd, so I know that life, you know? And, let's see, I li- I currently live in Pig Town, and so I've been here for about seven years now, I purchased my first home about two years ago. That's all, every, everything in a nutshell, and, oh, and I have a dog named Professor William Bruno Shakespeare, he is my heart.
Oh, he has a first, a middle, and a last name?
Yes he does, that is how, that is how we're moving, that's how we're moving in Baltimore.
I'm telling you, you know I love the new black. They name their dogs, I love it.
Yes, it's, it's a big thing, my man.
Okay, well, what's happening today is the power of be more, so we just, you know, we just really wanna chop it up about Baltimore because it has a lot of power, I keep hearing about what we don't have.
Yes.
We definitely have a lot, we are Charm City, there's a lot here. People don't understand the implications of having a, being a port city, the amount of money that come through ports, and, and the ability to do things on ports that other in landlocked cities and counties can't do. And it also being a digital harbor, that means something, that brings technology. You know, so, and, and you being a District 10, you're-
Yes.
What is yours sis?
Yes it is.
Yeah, you know, so it's very important to, you know, to kinda tell our community like, listen, let's stop talking about what we don't have, and look at what we do have, and how do we actually actualize that have into something that helps our families, builds our communities? Because District 10, it comes through District 10 to the rest of the-
Yes it does.
All the other districts, so, you know, I wanna talk about the digital enterprise, I wanna talk about the building. Under Armour is, is in your, isn't that in your-
No, so Under Armour is in District 11, so I have the seven communities around you, I have the seven communities around.
But they're right centering around you, okay, so they're in 11. Okay, so you know, I just, I wanna talk about, that's the number, is the power Baltimore, the collective power of the people? We have that, you know, people talk about the riots, but that was a collective power of angst, of young people being tired. That's, that's collective power shows, you know?
Yes, and, and you bring, you bring up a good point about, you know, it's, it's a few things that I wanna touch on, particularly about, you know, the power and assets of District 10. One of the, you know, I've been very clear about the revitalization and the, and the come up of District 10 for so long, South Baltimore has not gotten their due. And not, you know, not for any, you know, not for any blame against anyone else, however, it's just how the, you know, just how the cards, how the cards spanned out. We are seeing an incredible economic development in, in South Baltimore. Whether it be local businesses, whether it be the, the revitalization of the small business currently in District 10, whether it be revitalization of the waterfront. Communities in South Baltimore are taking back, are taking back their communities particularly in like your Cherry Hill, Westport, like water, waterfront areas. And even, and even, we're even seeing that collective economic impact in Pig Town. We're seeing that economic collective impact in Curtis Bay with the South Baltimore Community Land Trust. We are really identifying and capitalizing off of assets. And I, I don't mean the assets of something that is managed by someone else. We, I, I am placing communities in a, in a purview whereby they are managing and owning, whether it be financial, whether it be financial, or whether it be land acquisition. We, I, I am really, really sensitive to that because if you don't own those types of, if you don't own, own those types of assets, then, then you could be, then you could be quickly displaced. And so it is my job in using the leverage of my office to ensure that communities not only are educated and understand the powers that they have as the community, like, like you're talking about building that community, but also leveraging local, state, and federal infrastructure to make those things happen.
It's very important, and, and you know, we don't talk about it enough, that, you know, District 10 brings in a lot of, a lot of the money's gonna come through the harbor, you know? And as technology moves, things move faster.
Yes.
And that district is very important to the vitality of all Baltimore.
You're exactly right.
And the communities that are taking their communities back, it's important because somebody's gonna take it from them, I hate to tell you. So, so you better-
And you, you know, you, you, you know, it is, is for me, it doesn't come from a place of lack, you know? I, I, it's so funny to me, I've been talking about how District 10 is, is gonna be on the come up, even well before I was running for office. I said, this, this is the one, this is the district to watch. And it was so apparent that I actually, like, that was one of the driving forces of me running for this position because like, I was, you know, working at, at the time, I was working in Bethesda, working in DC, I had no, no dreams of coming back to Baltimore. But when I saw, you know, the, the, when I saw the, the writing on the tea leaves whereby my communities would be drastically impacted, I, I felt it was my right and my deed and my duty to, to begin to stand up and start elevating those issues. So I, I, against the advice of, you know, my mom and my family, they wanted me just to, you know, stay in private sector. I, I wanted to, to come back and help Baltimore because, you know, we are at a crossroads here in Baltimore whereby if we don't make these type of permanent investment in infrastructures now within black and brown communities and low income communities, we are going to see that it's going to negatively impact our communities 10, 20, 15 years down the line. That's so true.
I agree, you know, watching, you know, watching from just following you and watching everything that you was doing, and then thinking back, like as you was just talking, that long in the, like, references, like long in the wire, they talked about that side of impact and infrastructure, you know? I'm looking at years and we used to be down the harbor and all sides of the city was dead, and it was just the drive when like Westport came off of Federal Hill. And we was like, wow, we all gotta go back up this way and batter our way back up town when they can go back up to club and party and, and everything seems safe. You know, so like, sis, like you say, like, watching the work that you have done and being at sidelines and just being in that present, I'm like, thank you for like, I was telling Queen about the event you had invited me to, and I was like, I ain't got no money, he was like, no.
I wish somebody would, I, I, well, I mean, fundraising would kill me.
Kick rocks.
No, I, I, I firmly believe that, I firmly believe that, and you know, I know the event that you're talking about, Twan, I felt the need to, to place you in that, in that room with multimillion dollar business leaders because I wanted you to see that, you know, you deserve to be in that room just like everybody else. And because this is my event and I'm cultivating that experience and I'm cultivating that, that, um, that, that foundation, I felt the need, like, no, you're good, so. Yeah, I, I, I do that often, I, I mean, being born, being born and raised in Baltimore, you know, my, my mom worked four jobs, my dad worked, you know, I worked four jobs in college. You know, I, I often laugh with my friends, I just started getting, you know, the type of, you know, the type of salary that I need to pay my student loans off, so. You know, I, I often, I often make those, make those connections because I really believe that everybody, it's, it's enough money at the table for everybody, we just have to, we have to collectively organize our communities in order to make those types of financial gains.
I love that.
Yeah, we have to do it smartly.
Remember Twan has a twin now, it's two of us. Invite Twan.
I, I will, yes.
Invite Queenie.
Yes, will do, I mean, and, and it, and I think, and I think that, you know, for so long, like, for so long, it, it, it just has been a divide. And, and I, I, like I said, I often curate those types of, of networking opportunities because it is, it is imperative for our communities to, to be in those types of spaces. It is so key for our communities to be in those types of spaces, and it's incumbent upon leaders to know that type of power of networking as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
It's closure means everything, you know, it's important, it does, you know?
Relationships.
I know what they're doing, you don't know what they're doing till you're present.
Yeah, relate, relationships are everything, and I mean, you know, I, I've, I've learned that over, you know, over my time in community organizing, over my time, you know, just being an elected official, relationships are very important, like, we may agree, we may disagree, but it will be in a respectful way that is substantiated by data and fact and not merely opinion or emotion. So, so we, we, you know, we, everyone, everyone has a seat at the table and everyone can be connected in a way that, that really pushes, really pushes Baltimore forward.
You segue into something because I read about you. You got a Bachelor in Science and everything sis.
I do.
I mean, I am so impressed, I have a BS, my minor's chemistry. If I listen to you, I look at this bio, oh my goodness, bioinformatics, biochemistry, I'm so impressed.
Thank you, thank you, that means a lot.
And so I knew you were brilliant when I, when I, when you were coming.
I'm still learning, look, I, I've been one of the background, no, ironically, I used to be a behaviorally challenged child. Like my mom, I used to, and my mom will probably tell y'all the story one day if y'all ever meet-
Me too.
I used to scream, or, you know, scream and stand on the desk. And literally when, when I got introduced into science, it just calmed down, I wasn't, you know, I wasn't challenged as a child.
Yeah.
Um, and literally when I got connected to STEM, it just changed my entire life. And I'm, I'm grateful to those, those teachers and educators that really poured into me because, I mean, they were, I mean, it was, it was, you know, really bad where I was gonna be placed on medication, where I was going to be, you know, really, my life could have been drastically different.
It's amazing, and that's why we have to know our children and we have-
Oh yeah.
We have to be patient with them because now, they need something, that energy to be directed, you know?
Yes, yes.
I, I see you, and, and you're Morgan State grad, you know I'm a Morgan State-
Know it, go Bears.
It's their real life sis, it's their real life out here.
Go Bears.
Go real, so I, I'm loving you 10 times over. Your resume is amazing, you are brilliant.
Thank you.
I'm impressed, absolutely, you do have student loans, so I'm clear about that. She's not lying y'all, she-
No, I'm not. I mean, if you, you know, we, we joke on the council about that, I mean, you know, the council is, on this last cycle, we, we have our resident attorney on the council, Mr., you know, James Torrance, Councilman in District 7. We have, you know, an environmentalist, Councilman Mark Conway in District 4. You know, we have a huge, huge range of professional acumen on this council.
We need environmentalists in here.
Yeah, I'm just floored, I'm just floored, you know, just, I'm, I'm, I'm floored and in awe by, by the intellect and brilliance of my, my counterparts because they force me to think of things very differently and, and more integrated than I've ever had before.
Well, I wonder if you guys are gonna do something substantial for Baltimore City?
That is the question, and heavy is the head that wears the crown, I will tell you that, like, it is, it is, I will tell you that it is something that I know, Councilman Torrance and I, we went to college together. And we speak regularly, at least two to three times a week about different initiatives that we both are working on, different initiatives that are on the council agenda. And that is, that is something that keeps us both up at night because we didn't get here overnight, but there are things that we can do in the immediate, whether it be policy, whether it be different operations and programming within the agency, whether just making sure the agencies are working efficiently. You know, that's one of the things that I, you know, as coming back to Baltimore, I was, you know, a little bit taken aback by, you know, just the, 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 the work, the hard work of our city employees. It's just, just outstanding, like some, you know-
Needs help. BPW, yes.
BPW, I mean, just, I mean, literally, they, they continuously work in and out, I mean, I have had, you know, I work on the weekends just because I love what I do, but I, I've seen, you know, my staff work on the weekends, I've seen other council staff work on the weekends. And I think that the citizens of Baltimore really need to know that there are more good apples than bad apples as it relates to city employees, and you know, the, the city employees that, that I've seen, they've really worked hard on behalf of the citizens of Baltimore. Again, we may not agree all the time, you know, there may be some times that we, we have some, some lapses, but that's where grace comes in, that's where you have grace and understanding that they are balancing about 20 to 30 different things going on. And so just having that, just having that humility and having that grace is, is, is extremely important. So, I, I'm, I'm just in awe of, of the, the work that I see happening, particularly in Department of Public Works, they work like-
BPW, they need help.
Yeah, they need real help. Real help.
Everybody sees so much, and like you say, they really don't know the inside back, stuff that, you know, trash disposal dumping.
Yes.
Houses falling, wood dumping, people leaves and all that other stuff, drop off cars and all kinds of stuff, you know, and then the calls come in and somebody has to be the operator to always answer and just that voice and that permanent, like, can take your question and then, you know, looking at other things, like so much is going on, and then I see like, they throw the whole council up there and like, we expect the answer right now, we expect the answer, and I'm saying like legislations are coming in, they just getting in office, they gotta get settled, then you still got your personal lives and-
But at the same time, that, that's the, you know, and I hear you Twan, that's, that's the, that's the good and bad of the job. Like, that's, that's what we're here for.
That's the nature of the business.
Yeah, and that's what I, you know, that's what I often, you know, I speak with particularly young women of color, black women especially, about when, when you run for office, know to understand that you have to over, you know, overshare how you're going to impact your communities. I, you know, I remember working on the hill, they thought I was the secretary, I was the manager, you know what I'm saying? I mean, it's just, it's just different dynamics that we as black women, particularly working in civics and politics, have to like work around that I think, that I don't think a lot of people really know or care to understand. But that, that's heavy, like, that's, that's your role as an elected official. I remember this email I got first night yelling at me, I was just like, damn, I just got here. But, you know, that, that was something, you know, she had an issue and she had a frustration. And, you know, I, I often, you know, when I pick up the phone, people are often surprised and I'm picking up the phone and I say, you know, this is Felicia, and they were like, let me speak to Councilwoman Porter, I was like, well, she's not here at the moment, it's like, no. I, 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 I correct them and say, you know, this, this is she. And they, they are astounded, and what I will tell you is that sometimes you just gotta let people frustrate. We have been dealing with disparity and, and lack in, in Baltimore for generations.
Yes.
And so, that's just gonna, that's just occupational hazard, I do think we have to do it in a much more respectable place. I think that social media has, has allowed people to say things that they would not say in, in the presence of a person.
Yeah.
You know? But that, you know, that's just me, I, I, I do believe that elected officials should be, you know, should be a constant of public scrutiny, that's your job, that's your, your, your being, that's, that's what you're there for. And so if you can't handle that, then you need to find another, another position.
Hmm, well, yeah, you gotta get used to them digital cowboys.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot of keyboard cowboy, cowboy-
Yeah, but I mean, but I mean, again, it, it comes from a fresh, it comes from a place of frustration.
Yeah.
Like, you know, I, I, I remember one lady very, it was 11 o'clock at night, and I mean, you know, I'm, I'm, I know I'm not supposed to be online and, you know, supposed to be asleep, but, you know, she was telling me just about her frustrations and she didn't think I was gonna answer, and I answered within 15 minutes, she's like, oh, you're up, and I said, yes I am. And she was like, okay, you know, can we have a conversation? I was like, well, maybe at 9 o'clock in the morning, but not now, but I hear you. You know, sometimes people just want to be heard, they wanna be heard, yeah. And so it's, it's your job to hear them, you know, I, I, I listen a lot. I listen to lots of people, and it's not what people are telling me, it's, you know, not what people tell me, they're telling me the same thing, the trash isn't gonna pick up, the water bills are high, you know, they don't have a grocery store. But it's how they're telling me, it's how they're telling me, and, and it's my job to do policy to answer and, and solve those frustrations for them, it really is a puzzle.
Well, you segue into something because I wanna talk a little bit about institution power. You know, that, that Baltimore, you know, have a lot, you know, we in a, being in a health field, this is a, the health corridor. We have major hospitals, we have one of, probably the number one hospital in the country in Baltimore, is Hopkins. This is not in your district, but it's one or two, it's, it's-
Yeah, Texas has a pretty good system too.
Exactly, and then we have University of Maryland, which is the biggest employer in Maryland, not-
Oh wow, they, they surpassed Hopkins?
Not, no, Hopkins is the biggest employer in Baltimore.
Baltimore, oh, okay, you educated me.
Yeah, that, yeah, so that, so we have these huge hospitals, and then we have a Catholic, you have the Mercys and, you know, St. Agnes. So we have, we have a lot of hospitals in this one small Baltimore. And they have institutional power, especially John Hopkins. And, and, and University of Maryland too, on this west side that we live on within District 9, they are just fanning out and out. And I have, you know, it, it, to me, when I look at the city councils, we've allowed these institutions this type of power where the main constituent doesn't have this type of power. Where they can just continue to take land, and, and I'm not saying take it maliciously, but they've been able to get land over and over and, and put people out and move their workers in. Change, we talking about changing the demographics of neighborhoods. We're talking about gentrification.
Okay.
We're talking about building, Hopkins on the east side has brought in institutions that weren't there, the Starbucks, the, the grocery stores, that weren't there when, when there were homes with people living around the hospital, they never considered that. So, this institution power that the normal person like me is watching, it, it seems so unfair. Because if you miss your, your water bill or you miss any bill, they're on you. But they're continuing to just fan out and out and out, it, it's just a lot of institution power in Baltimore. What do you think about that as a city council member, how can we-
So you bring, you actually bring up a lot, uh, so, one, I do believe that the institutions in, in the city have a much larger kind of hold over the city. You know, one of the points that I often bring up, you all had Karen York on your show previously, and one of the points that I often, you know, we, we often talk about is that we have so many nonprofits here in Baltimore City.
This is the seat of nonprofits, yeah.
So many nonprofits, and really are, 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 you know, and some of them are doing good work, some of them are doing good work.
The key word to that sentence is some.
Yeah, some of them are doing good work, some of them need to consolidate based on their mission. You know, so we can have that collective impact. But to your question about the institutions, I do believe they have a, a hold over, over the city. What I will say is that the checks and balances that need to exist from the council, from agencies like the Department of Planning, from the mayoral administration, there has, there have to be checks and balances in place. And if not, then we're going, then we're going to see the erasure of, of, you know, particular communities, good, you know, intended or unintended.
Yeah.
You know, and so that's what, when you have, when you, when you have multiple and diverse people at the table, they're able to share, though, they're able to share those types of, you know, type, those types of perspectives. But, but I will say, we as a community, we gotta, we gotta get our stuff together. We gotta get our stuff together because if, again, if we are to acquire assets, if we are to acquire land, if we are to do those types of things, we have to be able to support and maintain that. You know, a lot of the, a lot of the institutions, you know, people will say, oh, you know Felicia, we're relying on the institutions, we're relying on institutions, that's, that's, that's true, that's true. But also how, you know, talk to me about the solutions whereby we are maintaining our, or, or initiating our sovereignty for ourselves. Like, what does that look like? Because I think that that's where advocates, that's where community-based organizations, that's where council offices can begin to infiltrate and integrate the community solutions to those types, so to those type of macro level problems coming from the institutions. Because like, for instance, you know, you, you look at University of Maryland, particularly in District 9, you, you look at that. They, they, they've invested, they've invested in the community, they've invested in the community. However, the community has been able to have that seat at the table in the latter stages in order to make those types of investments happen, you know what I'm saying? Like, they, they, they've been there, I, I don't know if it's been enough, but that's when you have to push the envelope. Like, you know, I, I, I hate to, like you said, come from a place of, you know, we're always in lack, you know, there's always a hold over our, our city, no, there's not a hold over our city, there's a lack of communication and direct communication from our communities to support, to support the change in the communities that we wanna see in our communities. We just gotta make our voices stronger.
Well, you know what, I wanna be, I wanna push back, I wanna be the advocate on that because what we haven't done is, a lot of times when we maximize and we talk about the macro, the micro, macro level of power that institutions have, we don't talk about what was created to get that, the black butterfly.
That is right true.
We talk about the white owl, well, you know, we're talking- Well, you know, we're talking about disenfranchising people and then talking, telling them to come from that point and now be aggressive and trying to get out of their own disenfranchise that was created for these institutions to be able to pull you out and be able to take over. Do you get what I'm saying?
I know, I get what you're saying, but I'm gonna push back on that. Because again, we have had, we we've allowed this this whole illusion of, uh no, not illusion. We have allowed this whole construct of white supremacy to make us believe, to make us believe that we don't have those collective powers and that collective action within our community. We 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 have, we have allowed that to happen. Like I, you know, leaders of a beautiful struggle, tho- those type of black building advocacy organizations. They they are building real, they are building real black power. They're they're coming from a place of impacting policy. They're coming from a place of directly, uh you know, impacting institutions. Like, that that is, that is the frame mind that 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 we have, we as a people have to exist in. We can't keep, you know, we can't, you know, the 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 infrastructure of white supremacy is real. We know that. But what are we gonna do to get out of it? What are we gonna do to get out of it? We need to make sure that we have sovereignty over our land and resources. We need to make sure that we have collective economic buying power in our communities. What does that look like? Making sure we have homeownership. You know, making sure that we're providing a livable wage and and substantiating black small minority businesses here in Baltimore City. Like, we 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 I I I I often get, you know, so taken aback by the the posture of of like, well, we just, we just gonna let it go. No, your your posture needs to change and that changes your policymakers. That changes who is at the helm of making and developing these programs and policies. And the, you know, we all go to school, you know, you gotta BS in chemistry. You go to school to learn the game. So when you come back, you know, the questions to ask for your community.
The application of the game. Yeah, you know, it's the application of, and you're so right, you know. It's not about particularly with you, because most of the stuff you learn in school, I promise you, that's theory. You will not, it's not the application of it. That's the theory of it. But when you apply the king's game to and his rules to outside to your life, to going after land, to going to to building, you know, legacy for things for you and your family, it changed. And that's why I tell people, what you go to school for is not more important than the exposure of the the power of thought. You know, we're talking about power today. The power of thought is amazing, amazing space to be in, where you can take your mind past where where it is at that point. Like, like, say felons, they're in jail, but if you thinking, when you get outside, imagine things you're gonna prepare to get outside.
Some of the smartest people I've ever known, smartest, smartest business people, smartest chemists that I've ever known in my life.
And I'm telling you, we're looking at Swan, look at what he's done. It's 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 amazing movement, but you have to, it's the power of thought and and visualizing yourself in a different space. And so I wanted to say something because I hear people say, oh, John Hopkins and you, they are a problem to me. But a lot of the problems is us allowing that problem to continue to serve. We gotta look at collective power.
That's what I was gonna say, because for a long time, as you said, Felicia, like, I just gave up and say, oh, it is what it is then. But everything that I was doing, I thought was best for us and me and the circle. But really, I was empowering all of us to be in the game lost. Because I was bringing them, they had me at the chain and was using me to get my other homies at the chain when they couldn't get them. So I was a lead recruiter. So then when I figured it out and was like, well, if I believe that I'm strong enough and I stood there and I went through these years of being in prison, then why can't I believe to be strong enough to stay out of prison? And fight against them and learn the game. So like, I start listening, start getting with y'all. And now look, now look what happened, so.
And it's and it's also, and it's also like, you know, I I I I I often think about um what's coming to my brain is knowing who you are and your legacy. We're talking about legacy, knowing who you are. You know, we as a people.
She went mute.
You went mute. You muted yourself.
Me, me as, me as an African American woman, you know, really thinking through who I am, where I come from. You know, it's it's so, it's so saddening to me to see young people with such lifelessness in their eyes. Like not knowing who you are, not knowing the brilliance that you have, that you come from. Like, that's that's what, you know, that's and that's what I wish, that's what I wish, you know, people do a lot more of. Because when when you talk, like, it's a posture. It's a posture. You know, and and it's, it doesn't come from a place of arrogance. It comes from a place of humility to know where your ancestors have been, to know that, you know, for you, you know, it's for you to sit your, your your tail in that classroom and learn something in order to come back to your community. Like, that, that is the type of legacy that we need to be instilling in our children. And unfortunately, it is not happening. And it breaks my heart. And then we begin to see that cycle of you looking every which a way for that, for that brotherhood or that sisterhood. You know, it's it's not the fact of illegal activity, it's the looking of living wage, making sure that you you get a a meal and making sure you know where your, where your head is laying at night. That that camaraderie and brotherhood and sisterhood.
Yeah, that's that's serious. Yeah, that, like, knowing who you are is so important. You know, as she said on a call, she said, the difference in her, she's a teacher, she's a professor, um Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith said the this, the the difference of her white students is they come in knowing, but her black students come in asking.
Yes, I agree.
Do 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 you understand, do you understand that how amazing that sentence is? That even the ones who particularly had, which you said, maybe two parents or support, they're they're in college, they're in a space where they, you know, they're expiring their mind, they still come and ask.
I'm the first person to go to, to to go to college in my family. Yeah, I mean, but you know, and Queen, you can probably attest to this too. The types of questions we were asking freshman year. Like, you know, it it was, it was definitely very challenging. And and that's why, I mean, you have to be, you you know, you know, people are like, oh, I'm not resilient, I can't do it. No, you come on, it's your posture. It's your narrative that you're speaking over yourself. Like, I believe that words matter. If you're speaking over yourself negatively, if you're speaking over yourself in an inferior manner, that is how you are going to posture yourself when you walk into these rooms.
And your children. And and it's so important for us to be better. You know, I, that's why I wanted to talk about power. Because power is is more than just what Baltimore is doing. Power, power starts inside of you.
Yes, it does.
You know, and what is, what kind of power are you leveraging from your own life and your own children's life?
If you come in from a place of like not knowing anything about power, like, again, you know, I and I I credit this to Dr. Raymond Wimbush. I'll never forget it. I'll never forget it as long as I live. I was taking an African American Studies course at Towson University and he basically shattered my entire cultural identity as a black woman. I was twenty-four years old. I'll never forget, I'll always be indebted to him because he started the very difficult and grueling process of self-discovery. As not, not, you know, uh Felicia Porter, a person going to Towson University. No, Felicia Porter, a black woman. That is, that that has to be, you know, ten to twenty to thirty steps ahead to know what I am, what, you know, to know what I'm doing, not only for myself as a black woman, but also for my community as well. Like, that that doesn't happen at a young age. You know, you see children growing up five and six years old. Twenty-four, I didn't, I didn't get that cultural shift and that cultural shatter until I was twenty-four years old.
You're right. I didn't get it till late nine. It's, you don't learn a responsibility to the community until, until you gain maturation. Uh 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 and and we expect from young people something that they're not capable of carrying yet. Still have to put, get, make them receptive. We gotta.
No, you're right.
We gotta put the seeds in there. Like twenty-five, almost thirty, I wasn't understanding how the responsibility of me being present. Myself.
Speaking up.
Speaking up and and not cowering down in my space was more important to to my community. And particularly to me. A- a- and so that's us as black people, we gotta understand the responsibility and the power that we have individually. But really, it's for the whole community.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And that's, and you know, and and that's, that's where I think we have to get to next, like, you know, that back to that community aspect, but also the community has to be supported as well. And so that's where your local government comes into play. You can't expect, you know, your community to support individuals and the government or the local municipality is not supporting the community to support the individual or the family, and then the family to support the individual. There are, there are layers. There are layers here in place that have to be in place in order for things to move forward.
Yeah, cuz one of the things I often think about, like, the aspect of growing up with the grandmother, the aunts, next door neighbors and all that checking guys. And now it's weird though, they better not say nothing to me. Or like house, family remedies of cousins and aunts and all getting down with the youngest or the youngest women or the nephews and schooling them about how to come up as a man. You know, it's not even dead no more. I was saying to my uncle the other day, I was like, oh, like, I taught the like shorty, Lord Herb and all, the younger ones, but like, you don't, they don't even hear from you. So like, how do I like get y'all in the game and get something and we all go play basketball and hang out? And then I see often that like certain ones are family and then they don't even know that they family, but they be like, oh, when I see them, I've been seeing him and I know him, but I ain't know he was my cousin. And I'm like, wow.
It's the accountability. It's the, you know, it's the accountability of it. You know, or even on both sides, again, as a thirty-three-year-old African American woman, as a sixty-five-year-old African American woman, what types of accountability and institutional knowledge is being transferred down to me?
We're transferring trauma. I know that.
Well, I I agree. I agree. Transferring trauma.
We gotta transfer more than trauma.
But you, you know, you you ask those questions, like, you know, in the African culture, you know, that you sit at the feet of your elders to learn. No, but but we've never had, we've never had that opportunity here in the African American culture to to do that. That that type of institutional, you know, storytelling, you know, institutional storytelling, you know, has not been properly passed down to us. And we can see it in our, in the generational shifts as it goes down.
Well, that's when you're around people who aren't you. The European culture, that's the breakdown of the African. You see this chaos because we're not living as ourselves. Um you be around something long enough, you become it. And it might not sit with your, your, the nature, who you are. And your continuous emulation of it manufactures into this chaos that we're living in.
And it's, and it's more, like, I think it's, you know, you you mentioned a word, you mentioned two words, chaos and emulation. That I think, you know, we, we've got to really can I be real here right now? Yeah, we about, we about to dig deeper. We about to dig deeper because to be comfortable in your skin is, you know, as a black person, is so like, is so perplexing to people. You know, when you start talking about, you know, be, you know, being comfortable, like, you know, you wouldn't believe how many DMs I get about my braids. And I've only had them in for two days. Just having, just having that, just having that cultural, like, groundedness. I don't know, like, that, I, yeah. It's 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 those type of identity issues that break down the individual, which impact the overall community. Because that 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 chaos is starting from the individual. You know, that 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 discord that's happening inside that person's mind is individual and it's reflecting back to the community. It's reflecting back into the community. And, you know, I I try to get people to understand that, like, when we see, you know, large things that are happening in in our communities, it is the direct result of something that has happened generations ago. They, people just ain't wake up and feel this type of way. They didn't just wake up and exist in these, in these, in these paradigms. The, this is by instructional design that we are existing by this. And we have to know that. When we're going into these spaces, when we're impacting policy, To- Toan, when you are working in a community-based organization, Queen, when you're, when you're talking to people on the radio, it is a layer that people sometimes for their entire lives will never reconcile in their head, will never reconcile at all. Will never.
Well, I tell you what, it's gonna be a hard life.
It could be a hard life. You 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 know, you, it could be a hard life. It could, it could be an easy life because you you begin to have, you know, the 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 the, to not participate with what's really around you.
We're not relatives.
You have like blinders on. You know, and like you say, the impact that you reflect tends to like harm you first. But you lash out and embrace it into the community. And then it grows and impacts on other people. And then the seeds are dropped everywhere and as you go, you rain and water them. And now you get fossils of this stuff. Like you say, as you like, people become to get like, at one point in time, like, I would not use quasi ill because connected to Morse signs and I got tired of explaining I was a Moorish American. Why don't you say black man? Why don't you say African American? And like totally, I will not do that. I will not dumb myself down. I will not put myself back. They was like, you crazy, bro. You you crazy. So I start taking off the crowds. I start, I said, came to a point that I was hurting myself. I start hiding. I start camouflaging and putting all this, but in the end of it, I was crying and marking myself because I was in so much pain and that's when the trauma, the getting high, running with guns, being sad, doing stuff to the community and outlash, wind up with pains and years of being in prison.
What a story. I know you said you have to leave a eight, right?
Oh, yeah, it's fine. Yeah, it's fine. I got till eight.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you know, I'm trying to get all the powers in.
We can continue this too. I don't know, you know, I definitely, um, I like.
For a second, we're gonna edit this out. Don't you ever schedule me for no hour. What is wrong? Let me, let me talk to you for a second. I edit this part out. Don't you ever in your African life schedule me for no hour. We not our peoples, I'll check.
But you get two more bites, two more bite queens.
I didn't know. I didn't know.
You know, Karen sat with us for two and a half. We had to be like, we just, we had a great time. It's a two-part series, is it? It was part A and B because we sat for so long talking about Baltimore. I want leaders to get out of their coats. Take everything off and let's really talk as black people, you know. Because, you know, you're all intelligent, you're all brilliant in your space, but it's about us. The community corner is, is where community leaders do maybe. You know, I want you to.
I know, well, I know now. I know now.
Come in the District Ten, I gotta talk to you face to face. You do that again.
I'm sorry, I look, I I I I accept that. I accept that. What she did, when I, seriously, I looked back at the, I looked back at the text and I was like, six thirty, wait a minute. I don't like being late.
I need somebody to help me. I change times all the time.
I'm calling. I was like, what is going on?
I really appreciate you. And next time, we're gonna have longer. You're gonna come back.
Two hours, yeah.
Yeah, you're definitely gonna come back, but um we enjoyed her, didn't we, Toan?
No, I I enjoy, I enjoy this too. And I mean, I thank you for creating and creating these spaces. I mean, I don't know if we have that type of media here in Baltimore City. Um it it really astounds me when I, when I, when I see It, it really astounds me when I, and when I, when I see mainstream media here in Baltimore City and how it just perpetuates, you know, the, the, the inferiority and the lack, and, and, and I'm so grateful to you. Like, if, if nobody else, I'm very grateful to you for cultivating this space to show, you know, that we are assets, we are, you know, greatness. We are excellence. Like, whenever I talk about this chick, I'm like, oh, we coming from excellence. We're not coming from a place of, you know, just, oh, South Baltimore. No, we coming from a place of excellence, and that is the standard, that is the minimum that we are, that we're here for. Like, so I'm grateful to you because, yeah, it's, I mean, as elected officials, we get accustomed with many, um, media sources um, here in Baltimore City, and, um, I talk to some and I don't talk to others.
Well, please talk to us and give us
I will, no, y'all, yeah. But I mean, I, I'm, I'm getting to a place where, I'm getting to a place where, you know, I'm, I'm changing the narrative with all media sources. Like, changing the narrative is, is pretty, pretty key, and you know, this, the, you have a level to do that.
From then on, I said, something has to change. Somebody has to humanize black people. Somebody has to get the real story. Somebody has to under, have to be there to, from an authentic lens that give us a, a space. And, and that's how Black Box Radio started. Black people that, we, we illustrate black excellence, that's our job.
Greatness.
That's our job, yeah.
That's, that's amazing. Yeah, well, we, we, um, let me see, let me mark off two hours.
So the next time you come, we're gonna do two hours.
I would love that, and I mean, I would love if, if, you know, um, I work with like a media person, I mean, I would love to be something in studio face to face because I think that
When they open up, I want you to come in. We, we have a studio.
Because, you know, I want to, I wanna start talking more, um, because I think that, again, we have to like, start reframing the narrative here in Baltimore City, and it, and it will start with catalysts in the community, and it doesn't have to be me per se, but we need to start talking. Like, I actually don't like talking a lot. Um, I'm actually behind the scenes, I move stuff, oh no, I move stuff. Yeah, I don't, I don't like to talk a lot. Oh, Lord, alright. Thank you so much.
And I'm gonna call you like this week, I gotta talk to you.
Alright, cool, we'll do. Thank y'all.
She is the truth. I can tell she's brilliant. I love talking to her and being so young and, you know, these, these women that is in your, your circle, they're amazing, bro.
Let me tell you something, right? And I just thought about like this, like, because I really just start reading back in my Moorish Quran, right, and really in my lessons, and you know, it says that like, there's things to talk about, knowing the wonders of the world and also knowing developers of kingdoms. You know, and the greatest dynasties are held by women.
All day.
Nazanga, Sheba, Nafertiti.
She wouldn't even step on the ground.
Some of the greatest marches of the world are led by women. Joanne Robinson, Angela Davis, Alda B. Wells, you know what I'm saying? So we look at these things, we got to really get out of the mindset because the media pu- publicized the male archives.
We live in, we live in a European patriarchal system, and when you live in a patriarchal system, they have no space for women. The European does not have space for women, and so, the African has never been like that. Always, as, there's always been an escalation and a movement around women. So we live in a different system, so the media functions as a system perpetates it to fu- function. And so, that is why it's so important for us to be able to have this synergy, like, you're a male, I'm a female, so we're together, and whoever we bring in, we just bring chemistry in.
That's the way science grew. Science is evolution, science is life. Science is a study of, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, brother.
Science, science is that meta, that meta energy of the creator. You know, so like, when you get into these things, thoughts develop ethers, and ethers manifest levels of, of planes. In slower density rates, things manifest.
You better say it, you better preach, you you Moorish American.
Things come to light.
You better say it, that is it. You just broke it down.
So, that's the whole it.
That's it. That is it. That is it. Let me tell you something. I love this community corner. This is probably the most informative, and I told somebody, she was coming, they were like, well, how you get her? I said, that's amazing, Antoine. Always the amazing Antoine. People say it's me, I'm like, uh-uh. It's Antoine QuaZil.
And you gonna find out, right?
Me, be me.
My, I have a whole lot of women.
Sister Porter was amazing. District Ten is a lucky district. She is, uh, she's brilliant, she's young, she's capable, she's intelligent, she's educated, and she's present. That's Sister Coming, Felicia Porter, newly elected councilwoman of District Ten. What you think, Toan? Did I, did I give all the explanation of that sister?
Yeah, absolutely, and if you are a young woman in Baltimore, because Baltimore need to get behind her as councilwoman. You know, and if you are a young woman in Baltimore and you think there's no councilwoman to follow, Felicia Porter is the one. Heard it from me, straight from the street. Can't pay me, or you can't buy me, because I'm from the coast, can't buy me from the corner.
That's it, that's Sister from the Village. She came up, she educated herself, she's young, she's spectacular. Anybody can do it. But if you wanna get behind, get behind her, you wanna volunteer, check her out, find her. She's doing great things in the city. She's gonna come back, but I loved having her. Felicia Porter, we thank you. We are here, Toan, deuces. We gonna deuce.
Black Box Radio, box up.
Box up, yo.